If you'll please stand.
Please pray with me. Lord, we come before you today in honor of you and to glorify your kingdom. Bless us as we do your work for the betterment of our community. Be with each and every one of us. We pray a special blessing over our first responders. Keep them safe and allow them to return their families. Would we pray these things in your name? Amen.
Come in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you got a rowdy crowd back there? Apparently the pledge is more fun than I thought.
Yeah. We're going to begin with the minutes remain the fifteenth, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Winn, second by McKeller. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This morning, I'm coming to you requesting that the city council consider canvassing the returns of the city council runoff election held June 15, 2024, for District Number Two, and adopting an ordinance declaring the results. The city council is required by law to canvass the returns and declare results of the city council runoff election to elect a city council member for a single-member district number two held on June 15, 2024. On the 26th of June, the city council, at a meeting, purpose of canvassing the returns of the city council runoff election on the 15th of June, 2024, and it appeared as a result of such canvass that the following nine persons received the following number of votes for city council member district number two. When I first sent you the ordinance, the votes changed since then because we received absentee and mail-out ballots. So the numbers changed to Petra Hawkins received 511 and Stephen Dinger received 456 votes. So at this time, and it appeared from such canvass that Petra Hawkins received the highest number of votes cast for city council member district number two, and is hereby declare the elected city council member for district number two to serve for a term of two years in office. She shall be sworn into office on the July 10 meeting, so we will do that at that time. So at this time.
Any questions for Sandra? All right, I undertake a motion to adopt the ordinance declaring the results.
Second.
Got a motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to come down for service awards. Petra, congratulations. All right, we do have one service award for Danny Sheffield Jr., Assistant Police Chief, 30 years ago. This morning when I was on my way here, I saw a bunch of young guys, I guess they were cadets, running.
They were running.
And they were probably just stuck and went swinging. And I guess that would be you 30 years ago?
Probably, I swear. Chief and I gave him a thumbs up on the way over there.
Thanks, Jacob.
Thanks, sir.
All right, R1.
This is a request for the city council to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. If approved by the city council, the city's Parks and Recreation Department would apply for approximately a $500,000 grant, matching grant. The funding would be used for the development and renovation of Stewart Park. So the request is that the city council consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Texas Parks and Wildlife for a local parks grant for Stewart Park and authorizing the city manager to take all actions needed to receive and expend grant funds.
Any questions for Leanne? Second. Got a motion by Haney, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leanne. R1. Russ.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Russ.
This is just a simple formality, but it's a request that city council consider the adoption of ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023-24 transit budget by accepting Federal Transit Administration, FTA, fiscal year 22. So we still got years to go to catch back up. But 5307 grant totaling $2,479,924 touches back on the aspect of what we just applied for to move forward. And if we don't finish this year out with these additional funds, we'll, I'll be asking Ed for more money for the local match, and that would give him a little trouble there, I'm not sure. But it's just recommended that council consider the adoption of this ordinance amending the fiscal year 23-24 transit budget and by accepting Federal Transit Administration, FY22-5307 grant totaling $2,479,924.
Any questions for Russ? Second. Got a motion by Haney, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. M1.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jacob Yankor with Tyler Water Utilities, and I'm going to be presenting Agenda Items M1 and M2 this morning. So starting with item M1, for the Bellwood Lift Station abandonment, professional services agreement with KSA. So back in February, the council received a detailed presentation on the Bellwood Lift Station, the history, the area, the impact that it serves in the collection system. And just to hit on a few of those high notes, it was constructed in the late 70s. The service area is over 3,100 acres, with some of the larger customers shown here. And the lift station is currently at maximum capacity with development coming soon. So back in February, we proposed to move forward with a design survey and an alignment analysis to determine if abandoning the lift station is possible and replacing that with a gravity system. So during that analysis, we determined that that is feasible and that is the best path forward, and we're planning on replacing the force main and the receiving gravity system network with a 30-inch gravity main. We're estimating around 9,800 linear feet of ductile iron pipe. And here I have the cost and schedule breakdown. The design cost is coming in at 1.8 million with anticipated seven months of design work. And then the construction cost for abandoning the lift station, abandoning the force main, and upsizing the receiving gravity sewer system is 14.1 million, and construction is estimated to be one and a half years or 18 months. So with that, I would like to request that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services contract in the amount of $1,804,750 with KSA Engineering for the Bellwood Lift Station abandonment, and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt and to be funded with consent decree bond funds.
Any questions for Jacob?
Yeah. Jacob, will this then handle the potential growth or the growth that we're going to see at, next to Sam's with the commercial and possible future residential? Just take all that into consideration?
Yes, sir. So prior to the alignment analysis, KSA actually did a study as well, and that was incorporated in part of the presentation back in February. But that is accounting for that drainage basin to be maximum build out.
Jacob, does the, this process require any new right-of-way, or is it just using the existing?
So we're planning on using existing right-of-way. That's part of the reason why the design time is only seven months. On projects where we're acquiring new right-of-way and acquiring new easements, that's really what takes a bulk of the time, is the negotiation with property owners.
Any other questions? Move to approve, M1.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. M2.
All right, so Agenda Item M2 is another lift station, but this is actually for the Shackelford Creek Lift Station improvements, and this is a construction award to CAPS Capco, bid number 24017. So over a year ago, KSA began the design for the Shackelford Lift Station improvements, and what that consisted of is to replace and relocate the electrical equipment that's in the building. So the way that the current setup is, is the electrical equipment is housed inside the building, and it's exposed to H2S sewer gas, which is corrosive and is causing problems with that equipment. So what we're going to be doing is we're going to be relocating it into a new precast building that's outside of the wet well. We're going to be replacing it, obviously, with new equipment. We're going to be constructing a flood prevention wall along the perimeter of the site. This area is prone to flooding during rain events. There's also going to be some HVAC improvements in the existing building, along with force main adjustments in conjunction with the flood prevention wall. And there's also going to be odor control installed at this lift station. So on June 11, sealed bids were received and opened and read aloud. We received two bids, shown here, CAPS Capco and Graycon Construction. CAPS Capco was the low bidder. The City of Tyler has done lift station work with CAPS before. We've done other utility work with CAPS before, as well as our consultant, KSA. So the recommendation was to move forward with low bidder. So I would like to request that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a capital improvements project in the amount of $1,392,181 with CAPS Capco Construction for the Shackelford Creek Lift Station improvements, and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt and funded with consent decree bond funds.
Any questions for Jacob?
Yeah. Same question, probably.
Yeah, first of all, I'm glad we got more than one bid, that's for sure. That saved us a million dollars. But why, when was that one built? Do you know, Jacob?
I believe it was built in the early 90s.
Okay. I mean, I just wondered, why did they put all the electronics and everything in an area that now, it's like, it wasn't that long ago, it seems like they would have. I hope we're not doing something like that again. We look back and go, why did they do that?
Well, we've seen the same problem at Westside, too, in the admin building. That's part of the reasons why we're building a new admin building, you know, far away from the trickling filters and the headworks. I can't really speak to why they did that when it was originally constructed.
We'll talk about who designed that later.
Jacob, when you see that big of a difference in the two bids you received, does that put up any red flags, or?
Yeah, so when we see that kind of a difference, we definitely vet the prices with the contractors. In this situation, one contractor is local, right? He's housed here in Tyler, and the other contractor is actually based out of DFW, right? So that mobilization cost is going to, for a project this small, is really going to drive their cost up to not be as competitive. Graycon is also, their sweet spot is a little bit bigger projects inside the plants. So we have vetted those costs, and everybody feels comfortable moving forward. That was pretty close to the engineer's estimate on that as well.
When will we begin, Jacob? When will these projects begin?
So for Shackelford here, we're going to be kicking off construction probably towards the end of summer, once we get contracts executed and a notice to proceed will be towards the end of summer.
So the, I'm trying to place it exactly in my mind where it's at, but is the new Genico development, 400 acres we approved last month, is that going to feed all that sewer down to that Shackelford Creek Lift Station?
I'm not familiar with that, the Genico location.
Yeah. So that's just like James's question about, did we figure in all the development at Sam's, the lift station on the west side?
Sure.
Can we take into consideration the development that's fixing the cake?
Here comes the cake.
Here comes the boss.
Yeah, no, so the Genico development is on the other side of Broadway from Shackelford. Shackelford's off of Cherokee Trail. Do you know where that is, down off of Cumberland? It's on the southeast side of the city.
East side, south of Genico.
He may have been talking about the Genico that's off of Paluxi, that's on the...
Yes, so, okay, that's, okay.
South of Grande.
You're correct, then, yes. And it does take into account, that lift station itself, we're rehabbing it primarily for the issues with the electrical equipment, and that wet well is actually a really decent-sized wet well that was planned initially by that design engineer to be sufficient for development up in that property that you're talking about. Yeah.
Move to approve, M2.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jacob. M3.
Good morning, again. This is a request for the city council to consider authorizing the city manager to purchase some playground equipment for WE Winters Park. The new playground equipment will provide a much-needed upgrade to the site amenities out there. In addition, we did, we held a public meeting at WE Winters Park in January of 2024, and we were able to get some citizens and neighborhood residents feedback on what they wanted to see out in that park. An additional quote for similar equipment was received from Game Time Cunningham Recreation in the amount of $72,798.26. However, the products and the services from Craftsman Commercial Playgrounds and Water Parks better met the needs of this project. Craftsman Commercial Playgrounds and Water Parks was selected as a vendor to provide the equipment through the Buy Board Purchasing Cooperative. The purchase comes to the total amount of $69,995.89 for the playground equipment. So the request is that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to purchase playground equipment for WE Winters Park through the Buy Board Purchasing Cooperative from Craftsman Commercial Playgrounds and Water Parks in the amount of $69,995.89.
Any questions for Leanne? Move to approve, M3. Second. Got a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leanne. All right, we're down to the consent agenda. Do we want to approve as presented, or pull something out?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. City manager is reporting.
Mayor and Council, good morning. Couple of different items to report on, and then we also, I'm going to ask Lee Roy Despero to come and join me towards the end of it to give an update on a couple of items as well. The first of which, though, I want to congratulate our firefighter, our Tyler Fire Department participated in the firefighter challenge, the Southwest Regional Competition, on June 6 through the 8 over in Oklahoma City. The Tyler firefighter challenge team, completed with teams from all over the US and Canada, and they were able to, be able to beat their previous times and perform exceptionally well in multiple different parts of it. The open division relay, the regional team, the overall team. Our team's hoping to be able to go to the US National Competition, or even the World Competition in October. So Senior Captain Patrick Mayo kind of heads that up, along with Engineer Terry Hawkins, and both of them are excited, we're all excited about cheering them on to see if they can keep going. Also, it's just some of the debris cleanup and everything. We want to give a special shout-out and thanks to the University of Texas at Tyler. On June 11, 50 UT Tyler freshmen, as part of their Swoop Week, helped to clean up the Goodman La Grand Museum grounds. Due to the recent storms, it couldn't have been cleaned any sooner. They picked up thousands of limbs and made piles for our park crews to pick up, and as soon as they were through, the mowers were able to finally work on the grounds. And so we're very grateful to our UT Tyler friends and students there, especially those freshmen coming in as part of their Swoop Week to take part in that. And so, last couple of things, going back to the storm from at the beginning of June. FEMA was able to announce at the end of last week that the disaster recovery center that will be located at the hub here downtown, and so that is open, I believe, seven days a week, and is there for anyone who wants to go have visits, or kind of, they're open to just come in, walk in, to be able to kind of have access to them. So that one, we're putting out quite a bit of information on. And if Leroy, oh, good, man, Leroy's on the spot. So two things, kind of, one is still related to the storm, the debris cleanup. We continue with that. In fact, citizens can monitor that on our website with maps that we've been able to place for both streets cleanup, which is picking up our public debris, and then also for work orders that have been placed for private cleanup for trees and limbs through solid waste. Leroy talked a bit about that status on the private side of pickup, and how we are probably a couple of weeks still from kind of finishing that out. The other side is with the fire that occurred out at Rivers Recycling Center, which is the recycling center for kind of the northeast Texas market, how we've had to seize operations for herb side recycling service for the time being, probably for, you know, we anticipate about over a year. But this recycling center itself is still open for those who want to be able to bring their items to the recycling center for recycling, such as cardboard or plastic. Leroy, do you have any mind giving a little bit of update on both of those items, sir?
Absolutely. Good morning. So as far as solid waste with work order numbers, I looked today, we have about 400 work orders open today, which is about 300 for storm debris and about 100 bulky tickets. And we usually do about 150 a week, so that kind of lets you know, two weeks is kind of what we're looking at. Because we're ramping it up, we've completed about 200, about 140 storm tickets and 60 bulky. So usually each week, we're hitting about 175 to 200, so it's at least a couple of weeks to get those 400 tickets taken care of.
So when you say bulky, are you talking about?
Mattresses, sofas.
Special or other mattresses and stuff?
That's bulky.
Because it has been kind of interesting with the storm, it seemed like there have been some bulky items placed on top of the debris, just kind of just take care of it all at once.
Yeah, and when they're together like that, and crews just pick them up, that's when it'll go to the landfill. If they're picking up bulk with the brush, if they're right there close together, they just pick them both up and take them to the landfill.
Leroy, a question that's been posed to me in regard to recycling. Do individuals need to keep, or is the city going to come pick up recycling containers, the orange-lidded ones? And when will customers see that charge no longer on their water bill?
Yes, good question. So we'd like them to keep the cart. We have had some customers said they don't want it, they wanted us to come and get them. But we're freezing that charge, so starting in July, you won't, they won't see that charge on their bills anymore. It'll be zero. And we just ask, you know, if they like the program, they're going to keep it, we just like, keep their cart.
What can we put in that can that has an orange lid, and will it still get picked up at its normal reclaim, or recycle date to be taken to the landfill?
So that's a good question. So as of now, we've still been picking those carts up. So starting in July, we'd like them to stop, stop putting them out. We'd like them to stop using those cans because we're not going to charge for them. It'd pretty much just be a can there. But as of right now, people have still been putting them out, and that's kind of what we educated them, just because we figured they'd have materials in them. So they've been putting them out, we've been dumping them, and of course, that material's been going to the landfill with the regular trash.
So July, it's not, starting July, we're not going to pick it up, yeah? So the idea is, we want them to keep them because we don't want to have to redistribute all these in a year.
Correct.
Okay. So how long do you think it'll take for Rivers to get back up?
That's kind of, hopefully, they'll move fast track, but we're thinking it'll probably take at least a year.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Leroy. Good job.
No problem. And like Ed said, the other one is our recycle center is still fully operational. So people can still come and bring their recycle items to our downtown recycle center.
I noticed Saturday, when I was down there, it was a bigger crowd than usual.
We've seen the people have been calling, they've been like, we've got nowhere to take. And when I say people, I mean, it could be a different, in another city. We were taking it to Rivers, so they're bringing that material to us.
Thank you.
And finally, just to kind of, especially as the discussion about the debris pickup and everything kind of reminds me, we will be doing quite a bit of campaigns over, probably towards the end of this week, and especially into next week, with the Fourth of July occurring. Obviously, it's one, you know, fireworks and brush that has been sitting out at the curb for a month do not mix, and so we will be pushing that enforcement message out there, very much so, so that people will understand that fireworks are illegal in the city, they should not be fired off, and that you will be ticketed if caught by the Tyler Police Department.
Good.
Right, Carrie.
All right.
Carrie's itching, she's got a ticket book ready to go.
Your chief mumbling back there.
Any comments or questions for the city manager? None? So is Sunday your birthday?
Is Sunday my?
Oh, my goodness. Yeah. I like to do that.
Actually, I didn't know what day of the week it was. That is correct. That is my understanding from my mother, that that is the day.
Early happy birthday.
Anyway, happy birthday soon. We're not going to spare you with the happy birthday singing, but happy.
Do you need to check with your mom?
Everyone should.
I mean, I know you Aggies and math are a problem.
Everyone, you should always check to make sure. Yeah, every decision's made with mom in mind.
That's right. And don't forget.
All right. We are going to go into executive session, so Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 litigation, deliberate pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer involving Leandra Leach versus the City of Tyler lawsuit, cause number 20-2049-A, and Abdis Rosales versus City of Tyler lawsuit, civil action number 62300245. It also is allowed by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, real estate. The city council will discuss the purchase, exchange, sale, lease, or value of real properties, the public discussion of which would have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the city. Any final action will be taken by the city council, will be taken in open session. So I don't know how long this will be. 20 minutes, 30 minutes? 30 minutes? So we are going to adjourn, or we're going to recess for 30 minutes, and we'll be back. Only the true believers. Of course, they don't have an option. Oh, wow. That's deep. So are we still live back there?
You're on the air.
All right. We are back from executive session, and we do have an action item.
I make a motion to approve the settlement agreements for the following lawsuits. Leandra Leach versus the City of Tyler lawsuit, cause number 20-2049-A, and Abdis Rosales versus City of Tyler lawsuit, civil action number 623-CV-00245.
Do we need to give the amounts of the settlements?
The first lawsuit settlement amount is $40,000, and for the second lawsuit settlement amount is $15,000.